Okay, I'd like to call the committee the whole budget meeting of March 4th, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin by reading our safety notice in the event of an emergency. Please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given by the clerk. Ms. Kerkopolis, can you raise your hand in an event of an emergency? Everyone will follow you. Okay, fabulous. Once you have evacuated the room, bless you, Mr. Kerkopolis. The building, please gather in front of the parking lot outside of the town hall at the blue sign marked "The Meeting Place." Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank the public for attending tonight, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement, to please be respectful while others are speaking, and to please refrain from clapping, though we will have a little section later where I will request you to clap. Delegations will have five minutes to speak, and we are asked to stay focused on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call, the mayor is tardy. Staff are in attendance. Declarations of interest, any declarations of interest? I see none. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda, we have no delegations this evening. Consent agenda, we have none. So, regular agenda, we are now considering item 7.1, FN-03-219, 219 Ontario Regulation 284-09 Compliance Report. Are there any questions from council? Okay, I see none. There being no further discussion, we will have a motion. So, receive as information, report FN-03-019 regarding the budget requirements of Ontario Regulation 284/09 passed under the Municipal Act 2001, be received as information. Council adopt the compliance report for expenses excluded from the 2019 budget as a requirement of Ontario Regulation 284/09 passed under the Municipal Act 2001. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Russell, all in favor? Counselor McPherson, yea or nay? Thank you. Please follow along. Okay, so we are now considering item 7.2, final approval for the 2019 operating and capital budget. Staff will provide a presentation, so Mr. Kerkopolis and Ms. Seffany. And I ask Mr. CAO to, this is a rehash of our presentation last week, but if you want to highlight any new information that's in the report, please and thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to be before committee again, and I will do my best to go through this as quickly as possible and bring any attention and highlight any areas that are new. Specifically, there's some inputs from the region which will affect towards the end of the presentation, the scenario. So just quickly, a lot of these slides you will have seen before, so we will go through them. A little bit of it really is some contextual pieces, a little bit of a recap in terms of where we've been at. The scenario, which as I highlighted, has changed in terms of where the region is at and those inputs. And then lastly, the subsequent calculations following that scenario in terms of value for dollar. So the town provides more than 90 programs and services, and council and staff have to balance, as we've said time and time again, affordability with service delivery levels. Here's a small sample of those 90 programs and services, and again, just some metrics that show what we do in terms of the wide array of services that we do provide as a So you've seen this slide before, again, how we compare to our municipalities here within the Niagara region context in terms of the average property tax and where Lincoln falls. As you can see, we're on the right side, so to speak, of this particular charge in terms of assessment, and continue to experience significant growth, as do some of our comparators, but at the same time remain below average in terms of affordability. You've seen this slide as well, which is really a matrix of affordability indicators in terms of household income and then property taxes, again, second and fourth lowest respectively in those two indicator areas. So a little bit of a planning recap in terms of where we've been at over what seems like a very long time, but definitely over the last four months. Council priorities, alignment to vision, these are all budget planning inputs that have been considered, value for tax dollar, as I've highlighted on the previous slides. The growth and development projections, which have really, in terms of this budget, driven some of the investments that you've seen in terms of those percentage increases. That culture of continuous improvement and continuing to look at how and where and in which way we do our business, and then the strategic investments that we are seeing to leverage additional funding. So again, a little bit of that recap, we did start talking about budget and a budget primer well before the election, and then post-election as we went through orientation, but the following have been the meetings we've had dating back to the beginning of January to where we find ourselves today and ratification on Wednesday. So a little bit of a recap on your water and wastewater budget for 2019. The new rate model, as we shared at the last meeting, was adopted in 2017 and is really made up of the following key points. There has been an annual increase to the base charge, which we call that fixed charge piece. There's no increase to the variable water rate usage, and we did introduce at that time the seasonal rate change that decreases over that high consumption timeframe in the summer where pools and grasses are being watered, but where there isn't that wastewater piece. On the right side of this slide, we just show what each of those works towards in terms of what it pays for. So the fixed piece, looking at maintaining, replacing, and building new infrastructure. The service and billing piece. The variable charge, which is really that usage charge, really goes to pay for delivery of clean drinking water and the amount of water we use and is measured by your meter. And again, the wastewater variable charge, this is collection, transport, and treatment of sewage. So here's your 2008 versus 2019 change. As you can see, there's no change year to year at the top in terms of that variable piece, and then there has been a very small increase to the base charge in terms of the fixed piece. Total, we see a $17.04 increase from last year, and you can see that broken almost half and half between wastewater and water. Your capital budget recap, some of the business drivers in terms of community impact as it relates to the capital budget. We do have a responsibility to continue to look at our investment from a capital perspective in terms of investing back in our community, and that is what council has done over the last number of years and continues to do. We have looked at tax increases and we continue to compare ourselves to where we've been. Those tax increases over the last decade have allowed for that sustained service delivery, and each year we've tried to take a very incremental approach in terms of looking at how that increases, but really, over the last decade in the past, not a considerable amount of enhancements. We are seeing growth projection moving forward, so we are trying to incrementally start looking at our budget and making those increases if and where possible. There is that growth lag, and I can talk to that a little bit further in terms of the percentage of this budget that I think is a growth-related budget versus a non-growth-related budget. Of course, we received some positive news last week relative to climate change and that FCM grant and the success of that application. Of course, addressing infrastructure and that gap across the province, and then housing prices, provincial and federal policies, all the things that we try to monitor and look at in terms of budgets and what we bring forward and in terms of the projects. So this 2019 capital budget is approximately a $13 million capital budget for 2019. That is an increase of approximately, or sorry, that is an impact to the levy of approximately 1.34 million, approximately $55,000 more than last year's impact. There is a major investment, as you'll see, in terms of our breakdown, that support the transportation and environment and safety service groups. That breakdown is on this particular slide, and you can see at the top when we look at those four capital categories that council approved last year. Corporate infrastructure is approximately 11%, with social infrastructure coming in at 13%, and then environment and safety, 42%, transportation, 34%. A number of the things that are driving environment and safety really are those growth-related projects, I think of things relative to prudums, a lot of that subsurface infrastructure that we often need to do, and that's where you're seeing some of that capital. The funding sources are highlighted below in terms of how much is coming from reserves, and those reserves are both DC reserves as well as additional reserves that are identified for various purchases. Long-term borrowings highlighted there, grants, which we've been successful with, coming in at 12%, which I think is a huge positive, good news story. And then the donations and sponsorship piece, which again, at 3% is a fairly optimistic and fairly significant element of any budget that is sometimes, from year to year, can change and can be different. So again, here's how we come to you with that 13 million, slightly over $13 million capital budget. The 2019 operating budget recap. A lot of the drivers and business drivers in terms of our 2019 budget really are around the general cost and some of the increases we're seeing in terms of doing business. Of course, there are decreases in certain areas, but overall, we're seeing an increase just generally in the general cost of doing business. That continued catch-up that we are playing on base budgets and investing in our people. We've talked at length about some of the training that we're doing where we can, trying to look at planning and succession as we move forward, and of course, learning and development in terms of investing in our people. The pressures that are really driving for council and us where we're going in 2019, you've heard us talk on numerous occasions about planning for growth, but that's more than just the service demands. There's customer expectations, there's maintaining facilities, there's the programming that people want and are looking for, and that connectivity piece around community events and places. Number two, the human capital, just regulatory framework that is changing across the province, and we highlight some of those. Of course, long-term financial sustainability, so there's a decrease in provincial subsidies. We've shared those charts with you on numerous occasions. We continue to look at revenue and revenue sources, strategic land use in some other areas, and of course, just generally prioritization of projects and continuing to deliver for council and for the community on the projects that you want. So you've seen this, this is that just uncontrollable versus controllable costs. This is a slide that we've shared with you through a number of presentations. This is what we shared with you last time in terms of that breakdown of items impacting our operating budget and how we reach that particular tax levy impact piece, and you see them broken down there by number as well as by percentage in terms of where we find ourselves currently right now. So here's the new part, our overall tax levy scenario in terms of where we are. This is just a slide that at the end of the day makes part of your recommendation, which is here's what we're levying, here are the various elements. As you can see, our revenues and expenses at the end of the day, at the bottom of the page, show a surplus deficit of zero, which is what you want, but here's again a further breakdown in terms of the revenues that we have coming in and where they're coming in from, and then the associated expenses in terms of what is driving those. Little bit of a final distribution of taxes. You see there on the right-hand part of this slide, we only account for one-third of the tax bill. Again, I know I think we often belabor that. I think it is an important element of this particular presentation when you're looking at functioning in the system, and I think when you look at the numbers, and I point out a few things on the next slide, you'll realize why I think it is important, but again, here's your breakdown. Slightly over 50% being driven by the region, a little over a third being the Town of Lincoln, and then the school board making up 13%. So a couple of updates, the region has approved their budget, and they are coming in at 3.83% as it relates specifically to region and regional services. We have Niagara Regional Waste Services, which is coming in at an additional 2.1%. When you look at our increase in terms of 6.94, that's also incorporated there. That does give you an overall blended rate of 4.33. That's down a half a percent from where we were the last time we presented to you. We were a little over 4.8% at that particular time, I think 4.88 or 4.83. I do want to, I think, highlight, because I think it is a difficult story often to tell with our residents and with our taxpayers, when you look at percentages and when that percentage really needs to be multiplied by a third, then when you actually look at it in dollars and cents, and you take Niagara Region at 588 plus the waste services of another $45, and then you equate that to the Town of Lincoln portion, the region is approximately $200, almost $200 higher than where the Town of Lincoln is. So again, I think sometimes when you look at percentages, it is difficult to tell that story in a simple, easy way. Municipalities across this province and across the country do use percentages to tell that story, but I think when you look at actual dollars and cents and you see that difference on this slide, you see that 3.83 equates to almost $600, or 6.94 equates to just a little over $450. Again, at the end of the day, you're looking at a 4.33% blended rate, and that is an increase per $100,000 of residential assessment of $52.26. So if we look at that 4.33% in terms of that overall increase, and again, we've done some calculations here, I think oftentimes we're criticized as municipalities when we look at either Niagara Region's average house price of a little over $250,000, or Lincoln's a little over $380,000. So we've given a number of examples here so that residents, in terms of the way we're communicating or the way they look at these numbers, can do their own calculation. Little bit of a breakdown here in terms of how much money goes to each of the particular areas. 28 cents going to Public Works Roads and Infrastructure, 26 cents to Parks Recreation and Culture, and then you see the rest of the breakdown, the legislative and administration piece, economic development, fire, our ABCs, and planning and municipal enforcement. So in terms of next steps, as you said, Mr. Chair, ratification will happen on March 6th, and following that, Ms. Beatty will be working on a budget communications rollout for members of council and the community.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from committee? Counselor McPherson, lead us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And during the last meeting, we had some presentations, and one of them was by the TVTA, and there was an ask that I believe was outside of these numbers. Is that still the case? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is still the case, counselor. I know as staff, Ms. Seffany and I have had those conversations with Mr. Danny as well in terms of how do we potentially, should council want us to look at work with agencies like the TVTA, but we are definitely at your discretion in terms of what that looks like. I think we've discussed options and opportunities around some additional in-kind assistance. I think one of the things we didn't hear back from the TVTA at that particular meeting or ask was specific around where the monies would go, and I know council did ask some specific questions to that. I don't know if Mr. Danny has anything to add. I did ask him to reach out to the TVTA earlier today.
So while he's doing that, well, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Danny.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, Chair, thank you through you. So I did have a quick conversation with the TVTA, and you know, further to what I think council was looking at during their last presentation, any additional funds that were given to the TA would go directly towards marketing, but in addition, we're going to have some conversations, as the CEO indicated, in how we can support a little bit more on an in-kind basis. So those conversations continue to evolve, but obviously, as the CEO had mentioned, we're at the discretion of council.
So, Mr. Chair, you know, I see, you know, that we, you know, with our investment in the tourist tourism strategy, that we are looking to potentially invest more money into tourism, you know, over the next number of years. You know, so I see a benefit to that money being included in this year's budget. I'm personally not comfortable with the ask as it stands right now. I think we do need more detail on what TVTA is going to do with it specifically, so you know, I'm wondering if we would agree to the money tonight, but yet not allocate that money until such time as we had detail on where that money is going. I wonder if that is doable. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, absolutely, I think, you know, we can set up whatever framework council directs us to look at. I think between now and final ratification, should that be council's direction, we will have to go back and look at and try to identify a funding source if that was the case, and how, or if, but likely how that impacts the current levy scenario that we've got before committee. So it is something that we can definitely go back, should council direct us to do that. I think the other option potentially is also just looking at the timing of the tourism strategy and maybe something coming back in year as well as another option, but definitely something that we can do, counselor.
I'll let others weigh in.
Yeah, well, and I was just going to say, through you, Counselor McPherson, and I don't want to repeat what happened our first evening where we're just throwing out numbers willy-nilly, so as you know, committee and council operate on motions. So if there's a motion that comes forward that asks for that, then so be it, and we should look at it that way, but knowing that, you know, there's a tourism strategy coming, and we had that discussion about premature, given the strategy is coming, maybe we look at it, you know, at some point during the year after the presentation and the strategy is received, but there was no real ask. It was marketing. The mayor pointed out that there was marketing buried in those committee reports, and to increase the number of Facebook likes, I'm L E D, so that's, I'm just saying, you know, motion, but I'll let you speak again. So go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and you know, I think we're all on that, or I'm certainly on that same page for more detail in the ask. I think that, you know, bigger picture, you know, the investment in tourism is here, and if there is a good spend that they're going to propose, I think we should have it in the budget ready to do it this year. So I would certainly bring a motion to that effect, that the money be put aside in the budget, but yet not be allocated until such time as the plan was in front of us and the spend was approved at that time.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion based on the necessity for more information, but certainly the money needs to be bookmarked and there. I think it's too hard in a budget of our size to find, you know, whatever the balance is going to be. So if we could, I don't know whether they require, maybe the, Mr. Kerkopolis, Mr. Danny could give us some advice about what that criteria would look like in regard to, you know, what we would be looking for. Anyway, I'm interested to hear a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think if the direction from council is to go back and look at some additional monies set aside but kept, I think kept back from actually being given to TVTA until we see a plan or until we see the tourism strategy or whatever that criteria is in terms of what's put in place, I think between now and final ratification, we can look at the identified funding source for that, knowing that it likely may impact, again, what you're approving in terms of what that final number looks like, not so much on the blended rate, but again, on our portion of that. So again, should council look at that as a potential direction to staff? I think some scope or idea in terms of how much of that additional ask you would want us to look at it, is it 10,000 to 20,000, is it 20,000 to 30,000? And then between now and Wednesday, we could potentially look at where we would identify those dollars as we move to Wednesday's final ratification.
Thank you. Counselor Breney.
Thank you, Chair, Patrick. So just, I wanted to ask a question, just a clarification to Mr. Danny, if I could. So if I understood you, Paul, accurately, that you were, like, since the ask from the TVTA, you've been in discussions with them, and there was discussions with regards to potentially the council would look at something down the road in terms of in-kind? Did I understand that? Has that been a discussion point? Like, I mean, we all know, I mean, this isn't something new. I mean, we go through a budget, and there's agencies, boards, and committees that are tasked to come to this council and ask for funds. They came. In my estimation, their presentation was weak at best. I don't argue what Counselor McPherson is saying, but if you've had a discussion with them and there's an acknowledgement that moving forward, it would be in-kind donations or services or whatever you want to call it, I'd just like clarification before we look at any motion.
Thank you, Chair, through you. So, I mean, the initial brief conversation that we did have was talking about, you know, if the additional funds were not set aside, what could we do? And a little bit more of it was on the in-kind services side of things, perhaps some more advertising in their publication, perhaps some additional marketing funding for the Winter Wine Fest and some staff time there perhaps. So it was still up in the air, but it was really based on the conversation this evening, and then we can get into a little bit more of the specifics with them, so.
Oh, you turned, okay. Hold that thought. Mayor Easton.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm quite happy to step down so that Counselor Breney can carry on with his train of thought.
Okay, okay. You know what, that is quite noble of you. Thank you so much. Press yours so you're back in, oh, your worship. Counselor Breney.
Thank you, Chair, for your, my bad. So just to clarify Mr. Danny's comments, so the conversation took place, so after that conversation about in-kind services, was there an acknowledgement in a positive light, or were they disappointed, looking for more money? Like, just where do we sit as it is right now?
So through you, Chair, based on what they heard from council at their last presentation, they were actually quite positive coming into that meeting on the questions that were asked from council, so they're actually quite positive in the support from council on their current budget on what they're given, but they left the meeting quite positive, so that's currently where we stand.
Thank you very much. Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, the in-kind services, they're going to be there. I'm not concerned about that. I know that if any group requires support, that if we can provide it, that this is the way we have been going forward, and I think it's in terms of their sustainability, any group outside of the town's sustainability, it's any group outside of the town's sustainability, it's very laudable that staff would do it. So I'm not concerned about that. That will happen. And I'm, we don't have a line called in-kind services. And if we did, it would be very substantial. However, I'm concerned here with accountability. And so if I were looking at support, it probably would be support so that a good business plan could be brought forward that doesn't have something called committees, that has things in it that really should be more visible and transparent. I'm trying to be very kind here because I don't think it's easy for the ABCs to come forward often with, with their budgets. So if, if, I need to know that that accountability is going to be there. So this is year five, and I would like to see a higher level of accountability, certainly with the way finances are reported. But even more than that, you know, how, how is, I, I don't know how to get the message across in terms of, you know, we, I want to see membership growing. You know, you want to see that revenue coming in, Mr. Chairman, that there just doesn't seem to be growth in that area. So I'm a bit hung up on those things. And that's why I'm, I don't, it's very, very important, and it is an important adjunct to our tourism strategy. So it's important that this go forward. And if we need to give them a little bit of assistance, whatever that is, absolutely, we should do that. But we can't keep going year to year without seeing the outcome. So I'm with Counselor McPherson on this piece because we need to put a little bit of a hammer on it. And I don't know how to do that. And I'm looking for your guidance on how that can be done so that in the end, when we review this six or eight months from now, we actually see some tangibles that we can say, aha, this is now working. That's, that's where I'm at.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think to the mayor's question, the comment that I would make is that we can definitely set, set some outcomes specifically and tie those outcomes to the release of any funds that we have. I think that's a, it's going to be an iterative kind of conversation with the TVTA board, with the council representation on the TVTA board, and with the executive of the TVTA in terms of the way they report, where the monies potentially go. So again, should council direct us to, to put some monies aside for the TVTA as part of a broader tourism budget and to not release any of those monies until outcomes are met, we can establish those outcomes and those criterias should that be council's direction.
Counselor McPherson?
I have a stab at it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would propose the motion that the $52,000, and that may not be the correct number, but the $52,000 requested by the TVTA be added to the 2019 budget and that those monies be released as formalized details of the spend of those monies are presented and approved by council.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. So I've got Counselor Russell. Counselor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to staff. Just a question about that motion. Will we have the opportunity if, when the plan does come in and it's approved, will we have an opportunity then to vote then on whether or not the, the money should be dispersed? Or is it, if they come with a plan, no matter what it is, it constitutes a plan, so it still meets the criteria?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I'm hearing is that it's not just a plan that needs to be developed. It's something that is specifically tied to outcomes and metrics and something that adds a little bit more substance than just, here's a plan. And so I, you know, if the direction again is to go forward with this particular motion, then we would likely be developing something that has probably more significant teeth, so to speak, to it than simply come back to us with a plan. You know, again, as I said, I think there has to be a back and forth and there has to be some, some level of, I think, teeth or, or, or lines that, and objectives that, that will need to be met. So definitely something we can come back with and establish based on, again, what I think I'm hearing from council in terms of a little bit more of a, of a hard plan, a specific plan, a detailed plan, an outcome-based plan.
Counselor Timbers?
Thank you, Chair Patriva. Through you to our CAO. Mike, can you just clarify? I just want to be sure what we're talking about. These, these dollars that we're talking about putting away when they come with a concrete, proper business plan, is that the extra ask? And what is, what's in the budget now? I, I'm not really clear.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think to answer Counselor Timmer's question, this is the extra ask that they've come back with. There is approximately 50, 52, a little over 52,000 currently that we do provide the TVTA. This would be on top of that. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was in that 50, $50,000 range. We can definitely find that number between now and any motion going forward. But it, this is a sub, this is an additional ask of approximately 50.
I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to be really clear on what we're, what monies we're talking about. I'm, I actually support the, the motion as well, Counselor McPherson. I think it's a good plan to not just take it away, but put it aside and have them come back with something more concrete. And it has to be approved by us. So I do support the motion as well.
Counselor Brene?
Thank you, Chair Patriva. So I just wanted to continue on Counselor Russell's comment, if I could. So your response was, was, was clear. But I mean, I, quite honestly, if we're going to a vote on this motion, I, I can't support it tonight. But, but I would like to support it. So we have members on this council that, that sit on the TVA board, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct, Counselor.
Okay. So I understood, I understood your response to Counselor Russell, that, you know, there has to be some substance to their ask as we move forward. But I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, would this, would this then come back to the board representatives? And then they would have their input or through the board representatives of the TVA, it would come back to this council to vote before that money is handed over to the TVA, TVTA?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we could do both. I think it's definitely a process that can happen at a board level first in terms of whatever that criteria and plan is that's developed. We can definitely bring it back through the appropriate committee as well, should council want to approve what that looks like. Again, I think it's a conversation, you know, I'd want to go back and have with the leadership at the TVTA and highlight that is the condition. Again, should council approve those monies. But again, we are, my advice to you would be that if we are going to go forward with this step, that it can definitely be something that is approved through the appropriate committee, likely planning and economic development.
Counselor McLuck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Kocopoulos. I'm just curious. My understanding is we have currently one counselor on that board?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct. Counselor Lynn Timmers.
So what sort of influence or what sort of guidance do we really, what sort of influence do we have on the spending currently with regards to TVTA money, seeing as we're going to be doubling it? In the past, we've had relatively little investment. Now we're stepping up to the plate. What sort of, what sort of influence would we have as to how that money is appropriated or spent with, within, from ourselves? As, like, for example, Mr. Danny, what, what sort of influence would we have on the spend of that fund?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Why don't I take a stab? And then I don't know if Mr. Danny has anything to add. I, I think the influence in having two board members with Counselor Timmers being the lead board member and then, you know, I, I also sitting on that board and, and Paul acting as a liaison. I think we have, we have some influence. We're outnumbered on the board by others. So we don't carry the lion's share of that. I think we, we carry influence by being, you know, an elected member of council, by being the CAO for the municipality. So some of that is not necessarily as prescribed. We're one vote amongst many around that table. I think if this money is put into an account and held, so into a tourism account of sorts, and held back and only released based on certain things being met, that's where we have control of this additional piece. The way the initial 21,000 and 30,000 respectively are set up, that's slightly different in terms of them coming to us. Usually it's in October, making a presentation, we releasing those funds and so forth. So we can definitely establish a different set of criteria for this additional 50,000, especially if it's, if it's held by us until certain objectives are met. So we can definitely set up a framework where we have more influence or more say.
That would, that would be something that I'd be interested in. It's just, it seems like a lot of trust involved. And it's a lot of money. It's just about double the money. And in the past, we had little influence because we had little, little skin in the game. But now we are stepping up. And I, I feel we should have a little bit more to say with how those funds are directed on an ongoing basis, not just approving or not just, you know, seeking, seeking targets or, you know, achievements. So that's, that would be my two cents for that.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, the, the intent of, of my motion is, is to get it in the budget, you know. And, you know, I, I am very disappointed in the ask and in the detail of the ask. And I think there was, I'm especially disappointed to hear that they went away thinking they had a great presentation, you know, and that, you know, there was no pushback by council. There was pushback by the mayor. You know, I was asking questions about the details. So somehow they missed it. So, you know, my, my intent here is to get the tourism dollars put aside and to hold their feet to the fire on how they're going to spend it. And I think to Counselor McLuck's question, that's how we're going to control it. And I would, I would like to see them come back in front of the entire council, not, not just the council representative. You know, it's, it's our decision as a council as to how this money is going to get spent. So that's, that's the intent of the, of the motion is to get the money put aside, but say, hey, wait a minute. Until you, you come to us and prove to us that that's a good investment for us, it, that's where it's going to sit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Timbers?
Thank you, Chair Patriva. Just a couple of comments. The TVTA did not go away thinking it was a great presentation. And they took away positives in what they need to work on and what we're looking for. So it was a learning experience. They didn't go away thinking they did a great job in that sense. But just my opinion. I see where we're going with this. But if we're going to put parameters, if we're going to put money aside with, okay, if you do A, B, and C, we'll release it to you. And you're going to come back to your, your committee that you report to, not all of council. Because if we do that, what are we going to do about the other ABCs? Are we going to put parameters around the BIAs dollars? You know, we, we're not going to release it unless you bring exactly, you know, and then we have to decide? It, it just seems like a little bit too much control, in my opinion. Like, they report to the planning, to planning. I think that's where they need to go. I just wonder if we're setting a precedent here, like, for all the ABCs. Just, just putting that out there. I, like, you know, do we look at the BIA as well? They're, they come back for another ask? They've got a bigger budget coming down the road? Do we hold on to the dollars till they get their bigger budget dollars? I don't know. Like, it just throws out some questions there in my mind. We have to treat everyone the same equally. Is this a one-off? We put the money aside till they come with what we approve? And who approves? So I, I don't know. I'll just put it out to the CAO, just your thoughts on this. Like, how do we only focus on TVTA? What do we do about the other, the other ones as well if they want to come back for a bigger ask next year?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to gather my thoughts there, Counselor, in terms of how I answer that. I mean, some of our ABCs are definitely driven by their own legislation in terms of how they need to be structured and how they need to be set up. We don't have that type of legislation necessarily around the TVTA. It, it probably is a, a one-time type exercise with the TV until they get to that point where, and by one time, I mean, you know, we need to set those criteria first. And then it becomes just an automatic thing on a year, on a year-end or on a yearly basis in terms of what's reported to us. I, I think, you know, you raise a good point, you know, in terms of, you know, are we going to set up similar structures, similar structures for others? So I, I don't know if I have a lot more to add to that other than I, you know, it's, it's a, it's a statement that something we need to be cognizant of.
I'm just not sure if that's even something we need to discuss, but I'm just putting it on the table. But if it's a one-time thing, I don't know. Right? I don't know if anyone else has any, any comments on that, but...
So through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, you know, I, I mean, I think what, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the question that comes out of that for, for me is then, let's assume they don't meet a certain set of criteria. What does council aim in our next conversation or our next step would be setting up whatever the criteria is for what do we do with those funds that are, that are set aside? Now, I don't anticipate that they won't meet those obligations. I think it's a way to hold their feet to the fire. But I think that is the question. If I, if I'm reading, I think what Counselor Brene, you know, and you were asking is, so if they don't meet those criteria, then what? How are we dealing with that particular piece? I assume then they stay in whatever budget line or whatever account we have. Again, I don't anticipate, and I don't want to say with TVTA not being here to speak, that they won't meet a certain set of criteria. I think what council is asking, should you move forward with this, is what are those criteria? How are they met? How do we hold their feet to the fire? And I think that's what, what may come out of some of this whole look at governance and the tourism strategy is what is that strategy? How does funding go? What is the appropriate level of funding? The, the TVTA is talking about their sustainability based on how they're currently functioning. But that organization may look different a year from now, six months from now, two years from now. And so I think that's, that those are some of the things that we hear or that we're looking at. Because I can tell you, and Counselor Timmer sits around the same table as does Mr. Danny, conversation around what is the administrative arm of TVTA look like often comes up. They're talking about some additional staffing. And that staffing model sometimes also impacts their sustainability in terms of what they're asking. Again, all good asks. We talked about the way and the hiring that they do of agencies to support these programs. Is there additional sponsorship dollars that can be out there and achieved in terms of targets and so forth? So, you know, there's a lot that I think will be coming out of the strategy that may help, you know, formulate what it looks like a year or two years down the road.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to allow others. I see a long list of, of counselors on the list. And I have some comments to Counselor Timmer's remarks, but I'll hold off and you heard everybody else before I come back.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor McLuck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Further to Counselor Timmer's comments, like, I think there's supposed to be some expectations. You know, when you come, you know, if you're going to the bank and you're asking for money, I, I think you should be prepared. You have to have a plan. If there's some that may feel that plan or that presentation was not up to par, that usually results in, if you were to go to a bank, it is a decline. I think we're being fair discussing this right now at the 11th hour. You know, if, if we don't, if we don't have expectations or we don't have goals or we don't have levels of achievement, then how do we know we, how do we know what we've done? How do we know if it's a successful operation when we don't know what success, how to really define success when we, you know, we haven't, we haven't given ourselves a destination? How do we know we got there? So this is where I think that, yes, indeed, with, with every, you know, organization we fund, we have to have some sort of expectation. This is a substantial amount of money. I'm not talking about every organization, 5,000 here, 6,000 there, this and that. Those, those are the weeds that we talk about. When you're asking for $100,000, I think it's going to require a little bit more than just trust us. You know, that's, this is the same organization that I remember. It was just... It was just, it was just the one person sitting all by themselves in a small little office, printing off roadmaps and, you know, and now it's turning into a real entity. And prior, you were discussing controlled costs and uncontrolled costs. This would be increasing, this would be increasing the amount of the uncontrolled costs that we will be facing next year, because I don't think that they're going to come back next year and ask for less. So, this is, yeah, every other department seems to every year ask for more. So, if we don't, if we don't nip it in the bud and have ourselves some control over the funds and how they're spent as they're being spent, or placing these expectations, and I don't, I'm not saying with every $5,000 we spend, this, this is, I'm guessing around $100,000, so, and this is an organization that used to receive, I believe, 12 or 16 grand at one time when they first started, so that's, that's where I'm concerned.
Three, Mr. Chairman. If I could just make a couple of comments, because I've got Ms. Sefany urging me, I think, to highlight a few things. So, one of the comments, I think, good contextual information, we haven't actually increased what we've given the TVTA for a number of years, but I think Counselor, to your point around what does next year look like, if you recall from their presentation, sustainability for them is an increase of $52,000 or $50,000 approximately this year, and then that incrementally continuing to grow over the next four years as they look at their sustainability. So, I think that's an important point to highlight. The $52,000 approximately does equate to 0.35 percent on the levy in terms of what we would be looking at. Your new blended rate would be 4.45, a 0.02 increase or 7.3 percent on our particular portion.
Counselor Russell? Oh, you're out? Okay. Counselor Rinchima?
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. So, I was going to say what our CAO said earlier on, that said, I think that we know we have a tourism strategy coming out. I think the RFP is out right now. There's going to be some action items coming out of that, and I think we all want to see what our big plan is going forward and what we really want to do with tourism. We've heard a number of people on council say tonight and in the past that we'd like to see more detail coming forward with, with these budgets when they come from agencies, boards, and committees, and I think it's a good idea. I think this is a good conversation that we're having. And I think that Counselor McPherson has a point. I think that we should be asking for detail across, across our ABCs. So, I'd be in favor of, of applying some kind of criteria, at least going away and coming back and talking about what we want to hear, what, what we want to see in that detailed budget plan for the plan going forward, and then we can discuss it at that time before the funds are released, because I think, I don't know how the timing of the action, the tourism action strategy or the action plan related to the tourism strategy, I don't know when we're going to see that, but we may have some really different ideas of what we want to do going forward. So, I think this is a good idea to put the brakes on a little bit.
Thanks, Counselor. And you know what? I just want to make some points before I go to Counselor McPherson, who's going to answer Counselor Timmer's questions. But earlier this evening, we had a presentation in our finance and business meeting. We're contributing $70,000 to a tourism CIP. We're giving this agency $50,000, upwards of that. The strategy is premature. The other ABCs have come in line with two or 3 percent increase. We saw the presentation last week. We all said it lacked. We all said we want more, but we're, we're going to do by a leap of faith and give them 50 percent more. I would make the recommendation that if we're going to give them anything, it comes out after a plan is presented from us. We're not going to put it in the budget. It will come from the capital rate stabilization. If we're going to put anything into the budget, we're going to put $50,000 towards the infrastructure levy where we know that there's a gap. You know, just to have it in the budget, to have it in the budget? I'm sorry, I'm not from that school. I need a detailed plan. We look at what the other municipal representation is. TVTA is one of the subregions in the RTO. City of St. Catharines contributes $525 and has a board seat. Municipality of Grimsby contributes zero. Municipality of West Lincoln contributes zero. So, we've already got a lot of skin in the game at a $25,000 membership and $30,000 in marketing. So, again, this is the same discussion we had at the capital budget. The plan is coming. Wait, and then when they come with a detailed analysis, there's only two events left. Their major event is already done, we're in March. So, there's a spring event and there's a fall passport event. And then we're going to start budgeting in November, come with that detailed plan, and then, and if there's additional monies that can come, it can come from the capital rate stabilization, if we so agree to it. But to just put it into the budget, to have it into the budget, there's a heck of a lot more, more important things that have more detail and more substantiiveness to it, like the infrastructure gap. So, Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess, I guess to Counselor Timmer's comment, you know, my question of the TVTA would be then, if they felt as though they didn't have a good presentation, why haven't we heard from them? You know, why haven't, in the two weeks since that presentation, why haven't they come back to us with, here's the detail that you asked us for? So, and I, and I think from a ABC standpoint, you know, I think we, we do get the opportunity to review their spend each time they present their budgets, you know. So, so the detail of those budgets is our opportunity to then challenge them. So, this isn't, this isn't a question of the other ABCs not doing something. And I think the library's done a nice, nice job of that, and the BIAs just getting ready to formulate their budget for 2019, so we will see that. The other thing I would remind this council is, the BIA came with a $5,000 less ask than they did last year. So, so, you know, I still think that in this particular ask, I'm willing to spend the money. You know, that's not, that's not the question. It's, it's, it's how are we going to maximize that spend? That's really what, what I think I'm trying to drive at. So, I'm ready to throw the motion out there for, for a vote, if that's to your agreement, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Let's, let's call, we've had enough discussion about this. We're going to be here all night chasing our tail. Let's call the question and let's vote. So, can you read, can you read the motion, please? And thank you, and we'll take it from there.
So, a motion that the $52,000 requested...
Oh, you're not on. There you go.
Thank you. That the $52,000 requested by the TVTA be added to the 2019 budget and that those monies be released as formalized details of the spend of those monies be presented and approved by council.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Yeah, so we've got Russell, Rinchima, McPherson?
I just have a comment to this question.
Okay.
I'm just not clear, should they be reporting to council or should...
I'm just questioning the part of reporting to council. Should it be all of council or should it be their committee that they report to?
Well, and I think this is, this whole, yeah, this whole conundrum, Counselor, is that, is that they came with an ask, they're not here tonight, but we're putting this...
I guess I'm looking from a procedural point of view.
Okay. Counselor McPherson?
I think you're crossing the line.
It's not there. Right? We asked them for...
The fact that they're here or not here has nothing to do with the motion.
Yeah, but they can't talk to it.
Well, we're not asking them to talk.
Okay.
I guess, I'm just trying to be clear.
Where, where the ask goes to.
Should they come to their, that's my only point? I'm okay with the motion.
All committees are committee of the whole, so it is, it is to all of council.
True.
So, I can amend this, say to the, to the finance committee or whatever appropriate date is, this is finance.
Mr. CAO?
I mean, three, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple of comments on that. I think just looking at our procedural bylaw in terms of where some are or other committees go that would be similar. I think planning and economic development likely makes sense. Madam Clerk has shared with me, we are all in committee of the wholes anyways, so all of council will be there, but I think procedurally, when you look at the committees that are coming to planning and economic development, it appears that's probably the fit. However, because we're releasing funds, I mean, I guess should council want us to do that at general business, we could also do it there, but I think looked at, looking at procedurally, probably planning and economic development makes sense.
You okay with that, Counselor?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Okay.
Or do you have a question? Or could you call the, she called the vote and then she had a question?
Okay, so do you want to, do you want...
You amend tonight, correct? We're not looking to amend any of that motion?
You are.
Well, I was just, I just wanted to be clear on the point as according to council. Are they coming to a council meeting or are they coming to planning and economic development? So, we can actually add that to the motion to report back at a later time to whatever committee, so we can formalize that, right? But to the appropriate committee, okay?
That's fine.
So, we can formalize that?
That's good.
To the appropriate committee. Yeah, we didn't finish the motion, so necessarily we don't need to call amendment, Mr. Chair. So, if you want to read that motion one more time, take a vote.
Okay.
And you're going to call the vote.
I'm calling the vote after he reads it, but we need to turn him on.
Turn me on.
You're on.
Thank you. That the $52,000 requested by the TVTA be added to the 2019 budget and that those monies be released as formalized details of the spend of those monies be presented and approved by committee as, to the appropriate committee, to the appropriate committee.
All those in favor? So, we've got Russell, Rinchima, McPherson, Mikulak, Timmers. Okay. Opposed? So, it passes. Any other questions? It's not a tie. There's nine. So, there's no further discussion, so we have a motion, and I guess this will have to change, correct?
Three, Mr. Chair. We're just adding that change so that in terms of what you read...
Okay. So, has that become 87?
So, we will. I think Madam Clerk can assist you with that. You can maybe add an "as amended" to the end of it.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, what we'll do is that we will read the motion, but it will be as amended and we'll add that section that Counselor McPherson added to the end, okay?
Okay, so where am I saying "as amended"? At the end?
At the end, Counselor.
Okay, I will write that. Okay. Whereas the council of the town of Lincoln has evaluated the operational requirements for the town of Lincoln to ensure the efficient delivery of municipal services to the ratepayers of the town of Lincoln, now therefore be it resolved that the 2019 capital budget expenditures of $13 million, 35, $13 million, $35,835 be approved, and further that the 2019 operating budget be approved with a tax levy requirement of $16 million, $438,911 for the local municipal purposes, and further that the council of the town of Lincoln direct staff to prepare the annual taxation levying bylaw as required by the Municipal Act 2001 upon the setting of the tax ratios and requisitions amounts by the Regional Municipality of Niagara and other applicable bodies as amended. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Timmers, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. Confidential items, I see none. Staff remarks, do we have any?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I feel that maybe I need to make some comments, and I think this has been a long process, so I do thank the senior management team that is here this evening and all the staff that were instrumental in moving this forward, and counsel for your patience, your indulgence, and your support as well.
Any committee remarks? I would just like to announce that our Director of Community Service, Ms. Shannon McKay, is celebrating her 29th birthday today, so I know we said no clapping, but I think she deserves a round of applause. Spending her birthday with us. Thank you, Ms. McKay. Mary Easton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also, on behalf of council, want to thank the staff for all the work that they have done on this budget. I think this was the toughest budget of the last five years. There's no question about it, and I believe that's what happens when you essentially set yourself goals, which are not just aspirations, but truly ambitions for your community because you are not afraid of hard work, you're not afraid to make tough decisions, and you're prepared to do that work in order to get good outcomes. So, I'm pleased, I'm pleased with the outcome. I had a conversation, Mr. Chairman, with the CAO before the meeting about the intuitive nature of the information on page 16, where you have to make those costs in order to reap the benefits of growth, and I'm not expecting him to bring this information forward tonight, but it is my intuition that there's a significant amount of money that equates to staff time in relation to development projects, and I think it would be very beneficial to know what percentage of the budget represents development focus. We speak generally about growth costs. We talk about all of the, you know, all of the things around that. We talk about the cost of service delivery. We know our service delivery has improved immensely. We get a tremendous amount of feedback from people on that, and I expect in the future, again, my intuition tells me that we'll start to see a reversal of those costs. I'd like to hear from the CAO what his response to my intuition is and, and, you know, what we can expect in the future, because I'm putting a lot of stock in plans around sustainable financing, the necessity of becoming very fine-tuned in that area. I'd like us to get, now that the budget has been approved, I'd like us to get going down that road so that we can become very, very slick at this. I mean that in terms of financial acumen.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I think to just expand a little bit on the conversation, and the mayor and I did chat about this earlier. I think when we look at the potential increase that we are looking at in terms of this budget, the mayor asked me to try to quantify in the best possible way with some level of accuracy or intuition how much of this budget is related to growth, and I think some, some of those calculations are a lot easier when we look at almost 1 percent being kind of prudums-related. I think it's safe to say that the number probably is in the 2% to 3% of the increase you're seeing in this budget is related to growth. We've often talked about that lag. Angela, Director Sefany often jokes she's got growth envy when she talks to some of her finance peers across Niagara region who are experiencing, you know, 3%, 4%, 5% growth, and that's helping to offset some of those tax increases. We are on that trajectory. The modeling that we are looking at will see similar numbers like that, so, you know, we often say there is that lag, you need to make investment now and you're going to reap that investment two, three years from now as that planning cycle finishes and that planning cycle moves forward. So, I think some of the modeling, we're going to come back to you with mid-year in terms of, you know... in terms of, you know, what does the future look like in terms of all of our financial wherewithal, our ability to invest in projects, to take on new projects, we'll incorporate that modeling. But when you're looking at a budget here of approximately 7%, I think it's safe to say a little under half of that is definitely growth-related in terms of the investments and the increases that you're seeing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I have some numbers here on non-blended rates that I think are worth mentioning. The 12-year average annual increase non-blended is 4.1. If we look at the eight-year average, it's between 4.7 and 4.9. If you look at the four-year average, which was when we started on this trajectory, let's say, to be realistic, it was three years ago because that's when we really started on the prudums piece, that number was 5.4%. So, you can see that, you know, we're not changing a lot in which, in the way that we're doing business here, but we have improved, and I don't know what that number is in terms of service excellence. But you cannot argue that, that growth gap isn't making it a bit painful for us right now, but it is something that we have, we are committed to. It's making our community a much better place to live, certainly better quality of life. And I'm happy that we're moving in this direction. I'm happy that the staff are providing the guidance that they are. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McEllic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kerkopolis. This is my first, first-term Counselor, first-term budget, first budget ever. New process to me. Beginning of, in the beginning of this whole process, I was, I was educated on the word "trust." And myself, I have taxpayers that have trusted me to make decisions based on trust. You know, yourself, Mr. Kerkopolis, you are asking, you know, myself as a Counselor to trust you. You trust those below you. Those below you trust those. So, I'm just really hopeful that the plan that you've set forth in the next few years is one that will continue to maintain or even earn more trust. You know, being new, you know, trust is earned and trust is kept or maintained, and I'm hoping that, you know, we continue that road. And I, last thing I would want to do is lose the trust of the people that have voted for me to be responsible with their money. So, that's my comment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think specifically to Counselor McEllic and those of you that were here last term and have heard me speak, I often talk about trust and, you know, I often say that the currency that as municipalities we deal with is trust and confidence. It's not necessarily the private sector and the way the private sector model sometimes looks. And so, you try to quantify when possible, what is that trust and confidence piece? And I can assure you, I think, like you highlighted, I have that trust and confidence in the senior management team and they and their teams. And, you know, I am, I'm grateful and thankful for Council's trust, and we will ensure we do our best to deliver on, on this budget and what Council's entrusted us to do and what the community's entrusted us through Council to do. So, I appreciate those comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our CAO and staff and Counselors. I think we've got a budget that talks about sustainability. It talks about wise investment, and we've laid the foundation for some transformational projects to be put in motion. So, I look forward to Wednesday night's ratification and the work to begin. Thank you. No further business. I call this meeting adjourned.